Mr. Curry, if you'd give the invocation. Please bow your heads for the invocation.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be here. We're grateful to live in a nation in which we can voice our opinions and elect our officials, and in you we trust. As we deliberate this evening, let the decisions that are made be those that are acceptable to you. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Mayor Jay Maxx Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gabia, District Four.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
He's picking up Chester.
Okay. And Councilmember Chase Williams, District One.
President.
Okay. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Opening remarks? I don't have any opening remarks. Any agenda announcements? I don't think there are any. Public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards up for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor Davis.
Okay.
Not for this section, though.
Okay. None for this section. Consent agenda?
Yes. Mayor and Council, we have four items on the consent agenda, three of which are meeting minutes, and the fourth is an easement agreement with Atlanta Gas Light Company, and this is to authorize the mayor to sign the easement agreement.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion? Joe or Rebecca?
I move that we accept, we pass the consent agenda items.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just want to say that this includes the easement. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
I'm happy to report that this is the easement that we've been waiting for, that has been critical to move the gas vault, I believe it's called, at the intersection of Ashford-Dunwoodie Road and Johnson Ferry Road. We've been talking about doing this. It's really a Band-Aid fix, but I think it's going to be a pretty good fix for that bottleneck there. And we couldn't, we can't go forward to it till we move the utilities. And so this is a great bit of progress, that we've got the easement now. They're going to move it over to a bit of Blackburn Park. And so by the end of the month, start looking for some activity at that critical intersection and much-needed improvements.
All right. Thank you. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify as I was saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, consent agenda is adopted. Announcements? Are there any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to our chief. The police department is hosting what will become an annual event, a road race, 5K coming up, and I'll let him give you the name of it. Go ahead.
Thanks, Marie. Yes, October 4th, we're going to be hosting our first, it's called the Hot Pursuit 5K Run. And the purpose of the run is basically to raise money for Shop With A Cop program that we plan on doing just prior to Christmas for underprivileged kids in the city limits. It'll probably be done at Target. We've already raised $4,500, I think, came in already, so.
Right.
Anyone wants to run on the 4th. In addition to that, we're putting on a women's self-defense class, which is filling up pretty quickly, at Marist School on September 18th, and that's going to go from 6:30 to 10:30. And if it does fill up, we'll probably hold one or two more classes. And that was a result of a lot of the women. I guess one of our residents was a victim of that carjacking took place at Phipps Plaza, so.
Okay. Thank you.
September 18th. And it was October the 4th for the...
For the Hot Pursuit.
Hot Pursuit. I like that. They have to run with a red light on your head going on. We'll give you a T-shirt.
You get a get out of jail free card if you win the race.
So what is the fee to participate in that? It's $30 registered if you do it by September 29th. Or, I'm sorry, it's 25 if you do it by the 29th, $30 after the 29th.
And where's the race?
It'll be the same area as the Ashford Park, the Bolt, the Bolt Run. That's a good run. Parking will be at the MARTA station. We worked on an agreement with MARTA Police.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Well, do you know what time it is, just for the record? The 5K is at 7:00 AM, and there's a tot trot at 8:00 AM. Oh, that's good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Reports and presentations?
Yes. The first item we have under this item is the presentation from DeKalb County on the Pilot Sanitation Program. You all will recall, we were one of the cities selected for the pilot presentation or pilot program of recycling and new services regarding sanitation pickup. And Mr. Gordon Burkett, who is the director for the DeKalb Clean and Beautiful Department, is here to make that presentation.
Thank you. Come on down, Mr. Burkett.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Gordon Burkett. I am the director of Keep DeKalb Beautiful, and I'm here to talk about the sanitation pilot program. This slide here is our project team. We actually have with us this evening our Deputy CEOO of Infrastructure, Mr. Morris Williams, my boss, Billy Malone, Margaret, who is Morris's assistant, and also Gordon Kenna, who is our consultant from Leafmore Resources. This is a picture of us at the Keep Brookhaven Beautiful inaugural event, part of the Great American Cleanup. I'm sure you'll notice a few faces that are familiar in that picture there. We had a great time together.
There's my little Liza and Lydia and Max, right there waving.
Very good.
What a great day.
This is our mission statement at DeKalb Sanitation. Basically, we strive to facilitate cost-effective, timely, and sustainable solid waste collection and disposal services, aiming for an aesthetically pleasing community for the residents and commercial entities that we serve. Our order of presentation is pretty straightforward. Overview of our objectives, next steps, and also, we would like to receive your input this evening on the process itself. The priorities of our process were pretty straightforward. Employee safety, very critical piece of that for us. For those that participated in the, in a part of our service that had the containers, we did not have any accidents at all with those folks, and that's a critical piece for us. Simplification of the service, collecting all of the materials that we collect on one day per week was important for us. More efficient operations, being able to do and provide a high level of service while reducing the cost to do it. Improved community look and feel, that's the aesthetic piece of Keep DeKalb Beautiful and the sanitation department that we enjoy, and also to increase recycling rates as part of it as well. The sanitation pilot went for three months. We did 28,000 households. About 4,000 of those were within the city of Brookhaven. Same-day collections, all collections of all materials on the same day. All pilot households received a 65-gallon roll cart for garbage. And throughout the county, we did nine different areas, including all commissioner districts, the city of Brookhaven, Shambly, Dunwoodie, and LaFonie. Now, Brookhaven was the only one that we used the recycling containers at the 65-gallon size as well. Our responses from customers. When we started this pilot, we started actually the end of April. That first month or so, we got around 11,000 calls. Only about 3% of those people were actually participants in the pilot itself. Most of those calls were informational. Am I in it? Can I get in it? How do I get one of the carts? After May, our calls dropped to pretty much regular levels that we experienced. In that time period, about 4,000 of those calls were for all other items. Of the 28,000 households that are part of this pilot, which represents about 20% of our service area, only 210 people requested that they be opted out of the pilot program. The most common type of issues that we had surrounded cart storage. That can be a challenge, especially when you're in a very tight community with limited private parking areas, and covenant issues. Next steps. This is kind of where we are right now, and at some point here, I'm going to ask Gordon Kenna, our consultant, to come up and provide additional information. Throughout this process, we spent a lot of time listening to our customers, which are you, of course, and also our employees and everyone else that's directly or indirectly related to the service that we provide. So we did a general sanitation employee survey. We analyzed the routes and also conducted a customer service survey as well. Included in those measures, we got some metrics from our fleet maintenance group, comparing them against national averages. As part of this pilot, we tried different types of trucks. Some of them you may have seen. One included what is affectionately called the one-armed Bandit, which is a fully automated truck. We also retrofitted some of our existing trucks, which is the picture that you have there with tippers, and also what is called a semi-automated truck with a left-side collection with a tipper on the side. So those are the three variables that we looked at. Performance, based on the type of equipment and technology, efficiencies, and also the challenges associated with using each type of vehicle. Also included in this process, again, is why we're here this evening. You see the one that's not checked up there yet is the elected officials inquiry. So obviously, you're part of that this evening. Customer service inquiries and reports. We looked at who called, who emailed us, what they were asking us, how we responded to that, and compiled that. Fleet maintenance reports, again. We did a before-and-after employee survey to get feedback. Customer survey was actually in August. We'll talk a little bit about that in the next slide, I think. Supervisor and inspector reports, so we talked to our folks that are in the street who interact with your citizens each day, and also other field observations. Customer survey findings. Now, this information is specific to the city of Brookhaven. In our final report, we will be providing a specific section just on the tastes and preferences that we found from your community. This study was completed by Kennesaw State University through a telephone survey. We received 326 responses from people who live in the city of Brookhaven. We found that these responses were similar to all the cities and unincorporated DeKalb as well. 80% were satisfied or very satisfied with the container that we had. Of the balance of those, some wanted a little smaller container, some wanted a little larger. 82% thought once-per-week collection was adequate for their households. 91% liked same-day collections of all materials. I don't know if we could get somebody to agree if it were day or nighttime at 91%. That's a pretty good number. 76% liked the pilot. Overall, we received an 85% satisfaction or very satisfied response about our services. And I'm going to ask Gordon Kenna to come up right now to explain this picture on this slide, as well as to talk a little bit about the blue cart findings.
Thanks, Gordon. And again, my name is Gordon, as well. Gordon Kenna. Just want to go over to make sure you understand. We hired Kennesaw State to do the survey, both to design the survey and to do the survey because they really don't have a dog in this fight. They're very independent. They have a national reputation for this. We're very happy with the results that came out of that and very confident that they're a good reflection of how well we did and how the customers feel. They made a little over 1,300 calls. They divided up the people that they called so that we felt like we called the right number of people in each area. So the results that we got from Brookhaven were representative of Brookhaven, but didn't stand out significantly different from the overall results of the survey. Each community is a little different, but in the main, they're very similar. We have, maybe I ought to talk a little bit about that picture because I spent time actually following our collection vehicles on a number of routes all over the county, and each area is very different. Brookhaven in particular, we're seeing certain communities where they are basically tearing down houses and building new houses. I'm sure you're very familiar with that. Those communities that are in transition put a lot of waste out on the curb. That particular picture has somebody that's very aggressive in recycling. They filled up their recycle bin, they filled up their garbage can, and they had five other bags. But we had other houses where they had mattresses and sofas and what have you. We do the best we can to service our customers and pick up everything that's out there. In terms of recycling, specifically for Brookhaven, and that's one of the differences in the survey, overall in the survey, about 60% of the people who agreed to take the survey said that they were recycling. In Brookhaven, that number was probably pretty close to 100% because they were in the pilot and they were given a specific container for recycling, and they all seemed to be very satisfied with recycling services. Again, not, the container doesn't always hold everything that we've got to pick up, so those blue bags are out there, and there are still issues to be resolved with respect to the blue bin that are still out there. I don't know if you have other questions. Are you, Gordon, you want to go to the next, the next slide on sort of where we are with respect to this? I think it's fair to say we are in the evaluation phase. I have gotten the basic results from our Kennesaw survey, customer survey. Our employee survey was quite positive. We're assembling all that now, and those decisions will be made when they are presented then to the CEO and the commission, and we're presenting the findings as we get them to you as well. If you have questions about the survey, the customer survey, and the responses that we got and that sort of thing, I'll be happy to try to respond to those, or anything else that's unique to Brookhaven to the extent that I know it.
Did you, the people that were not happy with the one-day, with the one-day-a-week pickup, do you have a breakdown of what their demographic was as far as, is it families with children or people without kids, or you have any idea?
We actually did not collect demographic information, age, race, and so forth. Interestingly, we did on the, in the survey, ask, are you satisfied with the container? The overwhelming majority, over 65%, were happy with the container. When we asked further, would you like a larger container or a smaller container, we actually had more respondents say, I would prefer a smaller container. We suspect that these are mainly empty-nester senior citizens, singles, and those that want larger containers, I'm assuming, or probably have larger families in that.
Your plans, do you, do you think you could allow for both, or no?
We're going to evaluate the prospects for how well that would work. I don't want to make decisions for the folks that have that responsibility. But that's a, that's a possibility. I will put it that way. It turned out to be about, of people who asked for a different-sized container, about 20% said, I'd like a smaller one, about 10% said, I'd like a bigger one.
I will try to answer a little bit on the container size. Because...
Look to the mic.
Let me see a little bit. Because most of our concerns, after everybody had a few weeks to work with the program, was the size of the container. What we believe is, is our default size is the size that we've got, the 65-gallon is probably going to satisfy most of the people. For those that are elderly or those that really want a smaller container, we're going to be able to swap it out, if this program goes forward, to a smaller container. On the larger containers, what we, we want to do is make sure that, first, that they are truly recycling. If they're not recycling, we want to encourage them to try to recycle before we just arbitrarily just give them convenience of throwing more material away that probably's got a lot of recycled material in it. But we will be able to adjust to our customers' needs as we go forward, if this program goes throughout Brookhaven, because we can just move a 65-gallon to another location and give them a smaller, or look at giving them a larger container if they meet some criteria. We're not going to make it really easier to go to a larger container because we just believe it's wasteful. We believe that most people, if they do try to recycle the 65-gallon, in most cases it's going to be adequate.
That's the bigger can, though, right?
It's, 65 is what we had out.
And there's, and you can have a maximum of that, two cans, recycling can and the other can, right?
Right. Both of them were 65 now on the...
Can't have two of the, of the regular garbage and one recycling?
Well, we're going to evaluate that, but there would be a cost implication. If there's people that really say, you know, I just need two containers, we are going to evaluate that and what that cost would be to provide that select few, and it will be a few, that either double containers or a larger container.
So I had a question about, there was a condominium project in my district named Duville over on Shambly-Dunwoodie, and we got a lot of calls from them. And I went over there and looked, and they're in pretty tight quarters.
Right.
And given the configuration and how hilly it is, and some of them have steps here and there, I could see that the, that the, the containers were kind of a mess. And then later, when I went through there, I saw a whole bunch, about 60 of them, just parked over in a parking lot.
Right.
So how did you end up dealing with a community like that?
Well, the smaller containers, that we, they go down to like a 35-gallon, which is real similar to the container they were using.
That we had now?
And some of these townhomes, condominium-type, stored it in the back, like in a porch area in the back, and they actually had to go through the house to put it at the curb on that collection day. They couldn't store, because the covenants wouldn't allow them to store that container in their yard, so it had to be kind of in the back. So the smaller container, they would be able to go through the house. So that's how we're trying to address. We're trying to make it, we know one size don't fit all, and we want to make sure the customers' needs are being adequately taken care of. The other part is, in that community you're talking about, didn't have, but we did evaluate, could they go to a commercial-type container where everybody just put it into one container, but it would have took up a parking place? And they was really tight, didn't really have that space to give up. But we want to satisfy the customer's need and make sure that we fit our program to their needs as best we can.
Very glad you asked that question because I actually followed the collection truck on that day that we service. I called it Duville, but is that, maybe that's close?
That's fine.
Mr. Williams was with us. He saw that firsthand. It's a great example of a community where one size doesn't fit all. We've got to figure out how to make that work, and I'm very confident that we can, and we do end up servicing them, but we just can't service them the same way that, say, a traditional, single-family residential community would be serviced.
Thank you. All right.
Talk to me a little bit about the, the big blue recycling bins that we had in Brookhaven. Were they single-stream recycle? So you have the ability to mix paper and plastic and glass and all that in one?
Yes. That's a good question. Yeah. We, we practice in all of our residential collections what's called single-stream recycling, where paper, plastics, cardboard, steel, aluminum, all can go into the same container, then it's separated at another location later.
And so there's no need for the blue bags anymore with that 65-gallon bin, or?
Well, I wouldn't, I would say that you have the option of using a blue bag. Again, the blue bag provides some level of convenience, depending on, on the size of your space in your house.
Right.
For instance, some folks use, you know, they just have a bag outside on their carport, and that's where their recycling goes. In my house, we use a blue bag, and it's just easier for my boys to take it to the curb.
Let me answer a little bit of that also, is the 65-gallon is a standard size for recycling, pretty much in the United States. We do have the 18-gallon bins, and them, it won't usually hold all the material, and that's why we did the blue bags. If, if there was a homeowner that didn't want to use a 65-gallon, they would still have the option to use the 18-gallon and the bags as needed to, at least they'd be recycling. So we, it's kind of like, that's a two-size fits all. Either you get the big one, or you keep the little one and work it that way.
Yeah. So I saw in the statistics, you had 91%, 91.4% participation in the 65-gallon blue bin recycling in Brookhaven. That's fantastic. Certainly speaks to our Green City Initiative that we want to promote. Did y'all, were you able to track if it actually delivered a larger volume of recycled materials to y'all?
Yes. I will answer that a little bit. What we did was, we had our supervisors go out and actually open the lids and look, see, was there anything in these containers, or were they just sitting out there at the curb? And there was. There was materials, and eat a lot of percentage of these carts that had them out there. So we know, just by giving them the recycling, and something they could deal with is 65-gallon, that we got more participation, and the volumes showed that also. We was actually surprised, we've always wanted to subscribe everybody into the program because we believe if they subscribe, they will participate, and we're not just giving them free supplies, and then they use them for a toy box or something. You know, they actually use them. So, but we, in this case, when Brookhaven asked to put it out for everybody, it was a very large percent, and I think it was, that 91% was actually using the recycle carts.
I might just add, that blue bag, particularly for a community that is really space-constrained, where they just don't have the storage room, or don't want to wheel it through their house, the blue bag is a great solution.
Yeah.
And we've got a little device where you can hang a blue bag from the back door or something like that, and, and then you really don't even need the bin, the 18-gallon bin.
Just one, one recommendation for the blue bag program, if you continue with that blue bag program, is if you can have it as an online component on your website to just click, put your PayPal or credit card in there and automate that process. I know that a lot of, you did...
We actually can take Visa, MasterCard, American Express.
Over the phone, though?
Yes. We can take your number, or you can do it by the web.
Oh, okay. Good.
So we'll send you that information, Gordon, please note, of how you do that. And we deliver the bags also. Sometimes we've gotten delayed before, but we do deliver the bags also, so.
A box of bags, it's 100 bags, it's about a two-year supply.
Right. Actually, I go through faster than that. I do a lot of recycling.
It depends on how diligent you are on, you know, making your space thing.
I should recycle my bags a little bit better, I guess.
Can you remind us what the cost on it would be for 100 bags?
100, 100 bags is $15, and if you go try to buy 100 bags at any grocery store, you're going to pay a lot more than that. And that was one of the things that we had to do early on. We had to put the recycle symbol on the bags because people were saying, well, I'll just buy these 100 bags and I'll use them for garbage. Well, that was defeating the whole purpose, so that's why we started putting recycle symbols on the bag. Cost a little bit more, but then our guys say, well, you know, that's, that's obviously garbage and it's not recyclable, and it's got our blue symbol on there, just so that we're making sure that they're using them for what they intended to be used for.
So with an increase in recycling that you collected in these 65-gallon bins, does that help lower your overall operating costs for...
No. This, this question comes up quite often. It cost us $150 a ton to pick up recycling. Running trucks up and down the road is very, very expensive. That's why some communities have gone to once every two weeks or once a month for recycle-type items, and we only get $7.50 a ton for the material. And right now, we have to haul them all the way to Marietta. So, 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 I mean, even though it brings in some revenue, it doesn't near balance, and everybody will tell you that that does any of this, but that's not why we're doing it. We're doing it because it's the right thing to do. And we believe that we should be sustainable, and we should try to continue to do that. So we doing it because Morris is right. And that was one of the reasons that we had to do subscription-based, because we didn't want to have mandatory recycling because of the expense. And, but now, from Brookhaven's example of 91% participation, obviously, that's making our eyes open up a little bit more.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Joe?
Well, you're not done with your presentation yet, so.
Are you done?
Sorry?
Are you finished with your presentation?
Yes. This is actually what we're supposed to be doing right now, just listening to your general sentiment, any issues or concerns that you have... Just listening to your general sentiment, any issues or concerns that you have about the pilot, any other interest of information?
All right, Joe, if you've got a couple.
I just want to take a minute here and acknowledge you all. Morris Williams, Billy Malone, Gordon Burkett, Gordon Kenna. Really want to thank you gentlemen from the sanitation department in DeKalb. You've worked very, very well with us. I know that we've made requests on you that you haven't gotten from other places, and you were very accommodating. We were strong with some of the points we put across, and I think we, the results of this proves that this is a, this is a good program. And the partnership that we have going on this is a very, very good partnership. We understand, by increasing the recycling rate, we're not, as you say, financially it's probably not really economical to do, but what it does to extend the life of the landfill that you have, which is a state-of-the-art landfill in the country, we know that everything that we can be doing to help keep products that don't have to go in there, from going in there, we're really doing something for the future. So, I applaud you for not looking at it just what it costs versus what you get, what received, because the payback is really down the road in the future, in a big way. We're committed here in Brookhaven to really moving forward with our recycling efforts. And we thought that we could substantially increase what we were doing, and I think we're proving it in this pilot program. It will be exciting, if and when it goes citywide, to have that ninety-one percent. And then when we do the educational programs that we have all been talking about, where we go into the schools, and we go into the businesses, and even places more in-depth here in City Hall, places like this, I think it's just going to be phenomenal. And the other point that you brought out that maybe most people didn't hear, I do want to repeat. When you're going with the way you're going with the tippers on the back and the one-armed bandits, we all know that one of the biggest expenses you folks have is, when you have downtime from injured sanitation workers who hurt themselves picking up packages or whatever. So, this is one way to get around it. And it's so efficient, we know that by doing it, we're helping you and you're helping us. So, this is a great partnership, because what's good for Brookhaven is good for DeKalb, and what's good for DeKalb is good for Brookhaven. So, we're going to continue to work as hard as we can to make sure this comes off really good. I just want to thank you, and acknowledge you for your efforts and working with us the way you do.
Yeah, thank you. You've been very, very responsive and helpful, and we really appreciate it, especially the cleanups and everything we ask, we really appreciate your. And I know the DeKalb residents, we hear it over and over again, are happy with DeKalb County sanitation. They love it, they do.
Thank you.
We look forward to many more opportunities.
We're going to have a lot more.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we appreciate it. All right. Next to Chatcom.
Yes, just briefly, we have been waiting a number of months, thank you Gordon, we've been waiting a number of months, and we have now gone live with Chatcom. That occurred on September the ninth, and we're very pleased with the service, so all nine-one-one calls are now being answered by Chatcom. There is a, what's called a one-button transfer for emergency fire services, which is still being provided by DeKalb County, but all nine-one-one emergency services for police responding is now being handled by Chatcom. One point that Councilman Madison brought up during our work session, which I want to make mention of again here in this hearing, and then also direct our communications director to get this information out to the public, and that is, if you have voice-over telephone system, please, did I say that right?
Voice-over IP.
Thank you. Voice, there you go.
Voicemail.
I have a landline. Okay. Voice-over IP. It's important that you do check that you have an address connected to that phone line, because otherwise, if you're calling nine-one-one on that and it's not been registered, you will not be able to connect to nine-one-one. So, we are going to send a reminder out to the residents and businesses here in the city, but please do check to be sure that you are registered. So, again, we went live on September the third, and all is well.
I just want to add to that, that applies whether that was with DeKalb County nine-one-one or Chatcom.
Correct, yes, thank you.
I mean, it's just something that all voice-over IP users need to be aware of.
Isn't there an additional consideration that even if you're dealing with any of the major networks like Verizon or AT&amp;T, it still needs to make sure that it's being channeled towards Brookhaven?
The funds, you need to make sure the funds.
You need to look at your monthly statement and see if you're.
I'm going to ask you to please take this as an educational opportunity so we can start to get the message out.
Yes, on your monthly statements, it will state where your nine-one-one fee is going. And if you, just by example, let's say you purchased a cellphone and had a service in another part of the state, if you've not changed your location with your billing service to let them know that your, that phone now resides in another city such as Brookhaven, the nine-one-one fee will go back to the city from where you originally signed up for your phone.
And it's important for us to get the balance of that, that fee is what, thirteen dollars a year?
Yeah, it's about a dollar fifty a month.
About, okay, about a dollar.
And where do you, where do you go to do that? Do you just call your provider?
Call your provider.
Okay. Call your provider and say, hey, I want my nine-one-one fees going to my zip code in Brookhaven, Georgia.
Correct.
This is very important, because we count on this as a city, as a contribution towards the overhead cost of operating our nine-one-one service. And it's as simple as just checking your phone bill to see if you indeed, the taxes that you're paying on that are going to Brookhaven where you're being serviced. So, we'll be putting this message out as a public service announcement regularly.
Yes.
To make sure people are checking, so I urge you all to please do that.
Yes, you can go to BrookhavenCityLimits.com to get information on that too, and other things with City News. That's our City News site, by the way, BrookhavenCityLimits.com. We encourage all of you to visit. It's a new, separate website from our city website where you can go to get information and news from the city of Brookhaven. Commendations to police officers, Chief Andy Dura.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a great pleasure, I'd like to commend four officers today. And to start that off, I'd like Major Juan Grulon and Lieutenant Eric Silvius actually made these recommendations, involved a tragic incident we had a few weeks ago. It actually was on the news, but on August sixteenth, these four officers, and they might as well come up now too, Sergeant Mike Whittle, Canine Officer David Fikes, Officer Taj Adams, and Officer David Snively. I'll just basically read one of the commendations, but this one's awarded to Sergeant Mike Whittle, and they're all the same. But on August seventeen, twenty-fourteen, Sergeant Mike Whittle, along with three other officers, were at the Northeast Plaza Apartments, thirty-five-hundred block of Beaufort Highway. When they heard screams, they were there on an unrelated incident, actually right across the parking lot from where this incident took place. They heard screams and a loud crash coming from the apartment building behind them. When they turned around, they saw a balcony with several people collapse onto the patio where people were cooking, and an open flame barbecue grill was present. Among the individuals injured during this incident were a three-year-old toddler who suffered severe burns to his back and sides, as well as an eleven-year-old boy who suffered severe trauma to his leg, which was trapped underneath the concrete balcony. The officers were assisted in lifting the concrete balcony off the boy and were able to pull the young toddler off the hot coals that burned, that burned him. The officer's quick response allowed them to radio EMS before anyone could even call, and fire assistance arrived immediately while rushing to render the aid. Due to the actions of these officers, injured victims received immediate aid during this traumatic situation. These officers are a shining example of dedication, professionalism, and humanitarian individuals that represent the Brookhaven Police Department. They not only displayed quick thinking, knowledge, and experience, but they displayed great passion. And part of that goes to Officer Fikes and Officer Carlos Nino, who's not here today, actually went to the hospital, visited the, one of the young boys, and our Canine Officer, Officer Fikes, actually took up a collection and helped assist to feed the family that was involved too. So, I'd like to give them all a round of applause.
Okay. I saw the picture on the police webbook, webface, Facebook page with the young man in the hospital. It was, you know, surprising to see that, it was just like a couple days later, so. Helping take up a collection to feed the family and go in to visit someone in the hospital, that's going above and beyond, and we really appreciate that. It really helps with our police's standing in the community, especially in the Hispanic community, where we've been working on building trust, and I think it's been working out. Okay, public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the first item is consideration of transmittal authorization. City of Brookhaven, the Comprehensive Plan of 2034, would ask that you please open the public hearing for this matter.
I'll open the public hearing. Any?
Ms. Cannon will make a presentation. I will say that, as you all know, we have been involved in working with the community. We've had great community participation and engagement in creating the first-ever comprehensive plan for the city of Brookhaven. We started the work in March, and we are at a point where it is ready upon your approval to transmit the document to the Department of Community Affairs. I'll turn it over to Ms. Cannon to give more detail.
Just want to make clear that this is the transmission, we're voting to approve the transmission of the comprehensive plan, not the approval of the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
It's going to be transmitted for approval, and we have sixty days to get more public comment on the comprehensive plan.
Correct, and if I might, the reason it's being transmitted to the Department of Community Affairs is because that is required by state law.
Right.
That all comprehensive plans are submitted to them for review, and also to reach out to surrounding jurisdictions for comment. But yes, we will still keep the lines open and receive comments from the public.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett, Mayor and Council. We're very pleased to be here at this point tonight. As Marie indicated, we have had a lot of public input, we've had a lot of engagement from our steering committee. We're very pleased at this point. We did hold two public hearings of the planning commission and did receive a recommendation for approval of the plan in its present form. So, it is here before you tonight. We do have Chuck Button and Amanda Hatton here with us tonight from Jacobson Engineering. Amanda has been the lead project manager on this project for Jacobson behalf of the city. She will make a very, very brief presentation. I know you all have seen this many, many times, as well as the public, but she's going to give a very highlight overview, and this is a public hearing, and we can certainly address any questions that you all may have. So, without having said that, Amanda, if you would.
Thank you, Amanda.
Don't worry, Amanda, we always enjoy when you come up and present.
I'm trying not to get booed off the stage.
Put the timer on, please.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me back here today. As you know, I was here on August twelfth and gave a more detailed presentation on the comprehensive plan, so I'm going to keep it very high level, as Susan mentioned. The Comprehensive Plan 2034 is the long-term vision, overarching long-term vision for the city of Brookhaven, special focus on the future growth and development of the city.
Bless you.
Although we're looking at this broad, long-term vision, we also look at what are the priorities that need to be addressed in the next five years to move that vision forward. This plan is intended to be used on a day-to-day basis by city staff, and as well as elected officials and your boards to help make decisions in the city. The plan is framed around really three key aspects. The one is the timeframe. I already mentioned, this is a long-term vision, looked at twenty years out, and then focused on what needs to get done in those next five years, as I already mentioned. The plan was framed around really three key elements, starting with the overarching community goals. That includes your vision and your future land use plan, and then looked into the priority needs and opportunities, which eventually turns into the community work program, which I'll talk about a little bit later. I did want to point out that the comprehensive plan is primarily focused on land use and the future land use in the community, but we did look at other key aspects, substantive elements, including community facilities, economic development, housing, and population or demographics. Did want to point out that we did coordinate with all your other planning efforts that you have going on currently. The transportation element was addressed by a separate, the separate comprehensive transportation plan, but we did coordinate with that team very closely. And of course, the plan was informed by the Parks and Rec and the Beaufort Highway Plan. The plan, as I mentioned, has an overarching vision. I want to point out that this came out of, again, this very community-based process. The overarching vision is that Brookhaven will be a national model for an urban, walkable community, but on top of that, preserving what makes it unique currently, its neighborhoods, its parks, and its natural assets. The future land use element, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on than some of the other aspects. The future land use is primarily communicated through the character area map. The character area map identifies thirteen unique areas of the city, and what is the long-term vision for those areas. And again, this is based on public input. The end result is that there are eight primarily residential areas. The vision for most of those is to further and maintain the character of those areas as we move forward. Also identified five community activity centers of varying intensity, and that's where jobs, mixed use, more of that dynamic community environment will take place. We did also look at areas that require special attention. Those include your natural resources and historic districts, other things like priority redevelopment parcels and resources for active living. So, those are some considerations that should be taken into account as you're making your future land use decisions, and they're documented in the plan. I'm briefly going to just run through each of the thirteen character areas. The vision's up there on the screen, but starting, I'm going to start at the north and move our way south from two-eighty-five to I-eighty-five. The northernmost character area is perimeter center. This is one of the five community activity centers. After that, we get to the Lakes District. That's immediately south, includes several residential areas. Again, this is one of the areas for preserving the neighborhood environment. Just south of there, we have Blackburn Park Neighborhood Center. This is where Johnson Ferry and Ashford Dunwoodie come together. This is seen as the second activity center that I've referenced of a medium-intensity area in the city. Lynwood Park to the west there, Windsor, just north of Windsor Parkway. Again, this is one of the residential character areas. Historic Brookhaven is immediately south of there. This includes your National Historic District, as well as the gateways into the area. This is another one of the residential areas preserving the character, being the vision there. Osborne is the area just immediately to the east. Again, this is a residential character area largely seen to, the vision to continue the character there. Peachtree Corridor Overlay District is the third of the activity centers out of the five. This vision here is largely consistent, or is very, is consistent with what is already documented in your LCI study in your overlay district. And we heard that loud and, loud and clear throughout the planning process, that the vision here is alive and well. Just south of Peachtree Road, on either side of Dresden, you have the Ashford Park and Drew Valley Character Area. The vision again here is to preserve the residential character and allow for compatible infill. Brookhaven Heights and Brookhaven Fields is just south of Peachtree Road, to the west of the Ashford Park and Drew Valley. Again, preserving this area is the vision as a residential area and ensuring compatible infill. When you move just south of there along, you come to the Lennox Park Character Area. This is the fourth of those community activity centers I spoke to. This area has a live-play component and a live-work component currently, and looking at adding a play component over time. We also have Briarwood Park. This is just north of Beaufort Highway. This area seen to continue the high-quality, high, higher-density townhome and condo development that's in the area. Roxborough is the last of the residential activity centers, or I'm sorry, residential character areas. Again, preserving this character as residential is the vision here. And the last character area is the Beaufort Highway Corridor. This is the last of the five community activity centers. This is the last of the five community activity centers in this area, is viewed as transitioning, or the vision is for transition from a suburban-oriented corridor to, to more of a walkable, dense, urban corridor. And I did want to briefly point out that within the Beaufort Highway Corridor, we do look at varying intensity zones, with the highest intensity being along I-85, and then it stepping down just south of Beaufort Highway, medium intensity, and then your lowest intensity north of Beaufort Highway as you get into your single-family neighborhoods and your townhome condo area there along Browerwood Park. We did also identify two activity nodes there along Beaufort Highway. The last key component I wanted to highlight about the plan is that it does include this five-year work program. This addresses each of the substantive elements of the plan that I talked about earlier, the housing, economic development, population, community facilities, as well as land use. There are approximately 100 action items identified, and those are all based off of the priority needs and opportunities for the next five years identified through the public involvement process. That was a very quick...
Thank you.
...short-winded overview of what the comprehensive plan contains. As it's already been mentioned a couple of times, the next step is for state and regional review, and of course, any additional public comments. But with that, I'll, I'll say thank you for your time again, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
I just have a quick question. On the community work program, just to clarify, there's obviously a long list of recommendations. Would you clarify whether this is sort of a set in stone, or if these are just proposals? You know, sometimes it feels like you, you pass a plan, and then everybody is forced to, to, to follow it step for step. How would you describe this?
Um, you know, the community, so the comprehensive plan overall is a guide. It's not a legal document that the city has to follow everything in it. We understand that you have other planning efforts that make several recommendations. You have a limited budget. You also have other priority needs that need to be addressed, so it's seen as a, as a material to provide you all to help guide these investment decisions and what we recommend in these areas, but you're going to have to obviously balance that out with the different priorities that, that the city has. The Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission do like to see what has happened in the community work program at minimal every five years. And so at that point, it's appropriate time to say why something wasn't addressed, if it was postponed, to highlight the achievements the city has made, but certainly intended to allow for the flexibility and the iterativeness of, of planning processes.
You mentioned that it's not a legal document, but isn't it used for land use in our zoning? Wouldn't this fall under our zoning procedures?
Yes, it's intended to be a guide and to help inform those decisions, but ultimately your zoning and development regulations are, are the legal aspect to that, but it is help inform those processes.
All right.
I think Amanda was, was meaning to say that the zoning ordinance is the regulatory tool, whereas the comprehensive plan is the planning tool.
Right.
And, and another point as to council, one, Councilman Williams' comment about the work program. We were very careful to footnote the work program to indicate that it is based on budget allocation and a number of other things, and it, there's a possibility that if the council sees fit that projects need to move around and funds need to move around, that's your call with obviously any additional public input that you might need. And the community work program is not the budget. It is a budget tool, but it is definitely not the budget.
So, so basically, this is the tool in which our planning department will look at the underlying land use when looking at zoning applications or rezoning applications.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just make mention also, this will be an important tool for your city manager in working with you all on future budgets, because I'll be looking to you on setting priorities, and as Amanda said, you know, there may be some changes that occur from one planning year to another during the work program, that something may take more precedent in moving forward and advancing that initiative and pushing something back. So it will be very important for me, when we're doing budgeting, to, to work with you all and make sure that these priorities align with yours, and that we can really start putting some real numbers to them. And the, the dollar amounts that are in the work program are estimates, many of which, especially when we're looking at design plans or further studies, they will all be bid out. So it is not the figure for which we expect to pay, it's, it's just, again, an estimate.
Do these recommendations, I'm just trying to review them, I haven't looked at it in a couple of days, but does it include the, the recommendations on the work programs from transportation and the other plans? Because I see, I'm looking at some overlaps about design studies for Beaufort Highway or Claremont Road, or, and I think those are in some of the transportation plans as well.
The actual plan document does not contain those community, those community work programs from the other planning efforts, but the intent of the city, and I'll let Susan add to this, is to have them put into the appendix once all the plans are adopted, including the comprehensive plan, so that the community can easily locate and find all of these items and their interrelatedness. And to that effect, there probably are some parallel projects in the different community work programs, kind of reiterating the importance of those particular projects to the community.
That's correct. You may see in the work program that there's reference to the CTP, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan or the Recreation Parts Plan, and those three plans, as well as the work plans for those, will be added to the appendix of this particular plan after you adopt it.
Okay, they're not required for us to send it over?
They are not required, no ma'am.
Okay.
I just want to say, as a, as a new city, and this being our first comprehensive plan, I'm really pleased, and I want to extend a thanks to you and to Chuck, Chuck Button. I think this was a phenomenal effort, and I think the results show it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, public comment?
Catherine Bernard?
I think we are rushing into this, and after looking into a little bit of what other communities have done with these comprehensive plans, my concerns continue. So while I understand there are elements of this plan that we like and can be pleased by, I think we are rushing to adopt it in a way that is not necessarily supported by the relevant regulations. So I just wanted to draw a couple of things to the, the council's attention that you might possibly be interested by, but one is something we talked about with the Planning Commission last week, and that is that our plan does not include a capital improvements element. This is something that is strongly encouraged by the Department of Community Affairs regulations. It is technically optional, but local governments are encouraged to have this kind of plan, because if you don't have that planning element, you are ineligible to use developer impact fees. Now, when I brought this up last week, I was told Brookhaven doesn't do developer impact fees, and indeed, the 1990 law that covers them is very complex and would require us to look at the existing infrastructure that we have and make proportional charges. But in for a penny, in for a pound, if we're going to do this much central planning and control, as in the comprehensive plan, shouldn't we at least have the tool to get the developers to chip in? So even if you like everything else about the comprehensive plan, that absence is something that we're going to feel in our community as something that we won't be able to do. We won't be able to get developers to help pay for the impact of any developments that they have, and that absence, I think, is going to be a problem. I also wanted to express my concern about the rush process by which this has been adopted. Now, we've heard from Jacobs that there has been a lot of opportunity for public comment. That has not been apparent from the community. So I did take a look at, again, the Department of Community Affairs suggestions for what should be done in order to accurately solicit public comment, and we did have other public hearings, the ones that were statutorily required, the minimum. We did not have a dedicated website that I saw. There were various things that would link to South Face, or Jacobs, or other private consultants, but there was not a website designated to the Brookhaven comprehensive plan, and indeed, I think one of the easiest ways to find it on the web was the Brookhaven Posts copy. There were no direct mail surveys, also suggested, student programs, workshops, and a website interactive with surveys, as well as a speakers bureau to make people available to community groups to educate people on this. So this comprehensive plan might have some great elements, but let's please slow it down until we can include a capital improvement element to make sure that we have all the tools needed to deal with development, so that we make sure we have time for community involvement. I don't, speaking of rushing, we do have one year from the transmittal to the Atlanta Regional Commission to consider it, so we have a full year, and I would also like to emphasize that transmittal to the Atlanta Regional Commission does qualify as completion under the statute. So at the point where we transmit it, we are saying, good to go, now we just need everyone else's input. So thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Marie, when did we start with the public input on the comprehensive plan?
We started in March of this year, and in one aspect, we went above the requirements of DCA by the creation of the steering committees that you all created, and they were the guiding force, because they represented different components of the community, and while we did not have a dedicated website specifically for the comprehensive plan, we did include it in our website, and we did have links to that, and we did a number of, of points of communication, whether that was through eBlast, reminding citizens of meetings that were coming up. We, of course, posted meetings. We covered the, the meetings, all of the consultants pursuant to every planning initiative that we undertook, took minutes, and those minutes were also posted of the meetings. So we, we, we really did have a, a very good citizen participation program, and, and I think, just for the record, because I don't want the community confused, the transmittal of the document goes to the Department of Community Affairs. Now, they will certainly transmit a copy to the Atlanta Regional Commission, who then in turn will give it to adjacent and abutting jurisdictions, just to get their feedback, especially where we share common boundaries. But the State Planning Act is, is very clear that this gets transmitted to the Department of Community Affairs.
To Mr. Bernard's point about the capital portion of the...
Capital element.
Yeah.
Capital improvement element.
Yeah.
Correct, that is, you know, if the city were to engage the idea of impact fees, which is another source of funds in order to offset the cost of, of growth, there are a number of requirements...
And that's a new tax, is it not?
It's not a tax, it's a fee.
It's a fee?
It is a fee, there's clearly a difference. It is a fee. And the, the purpose of impact fees are that they are to offset the cost of future growth, so that the current citizenry or the current digest does not have to bear the cost of growth. And there's, the law is very specific on the number of improvements. There are seven, I believe, if my memory is correct, and basically, it's infrastructure improvement, roads, public safety, water, sewer, parks and recreation, libraries. So those are the components for which you would want to offset the cost, and the fee is assigned to the impact that that development would have on the delivery of services. The law is very specific, and I was involved in its creation back in the, in fact, it started in the late 1980s, and of course, was enabled and enacted by the General Assembly in 1990, but it calls for an impact fee advisory committee, and it's the impact fee advisory committee that represents a majority percentage of the development community, the banking industry, the real estate industry, and of course, citizens, where they come together and look at first and foremost the delivery of levels of services. What is the established level of service? An example is our established level of service for public safety is a three-minute emergency response time. So you would identify what those levels of service are for each of these components for, if you, for whatever desire you have to collect impact fees under a particular category. So that committee has to be formed, they have to meet, and they have to understand and review the levels of service, and then there is an inventory of the infrastructure that's available to, one, does it meet current requirements and standards of the current population, is the delivery of service X, and you can't increase the level of service to the future development without paying that differential. So you can't require new development to have a higher standard of service than what your current population receives. So it's a very complex law, and it's very complex to go through it and to identify. There's a formula that is, that underwrites these, these programs, so that there is fairness and equity. There's a level playing field that is required, that everybody pays the same fee. There is a misunderstanding by the public many times, and even some developers, that it's a tax versus a fee, but the law is very clear that, that it is a fee. If the local government decides they want to pursue impact fees, then they would have to go back and amend their comprehensive plan and call for the need of impact fees as another source of funds to offset the cost of growth.
Well, so the comments Mrs. Bernard made about the cap, the lack of a capital element in our plan, that she was saying that the, the law, the DCA encourages, strongly encourages us to have a capital element, why do we choose not to have one, or why do we, why do, why does ours not have one? If it strongly encourages, is there a reason?
Well, a capital improvement element, we, we don't have that, because we don't have impact fees.
Right.
That's, that's the first and foremost reason.
It's kind of cart before the horse.
We do have a work program, correct, but we do have a work program, which sets forth the work product that is expected in order to enable your comprehensive plan to be implemented. And since it is a 20-year plan, a look into the future, you will have four sets of five-year work programs. So every year, this council will be revisiting your work program. As we drop off a year, we're going to be adding a year. Now, we do have to report every five years to DCA where we stand, but we're not going to wait five years. The practice is every year, we go back into that work program, because we'll be adding a new year, and we'll be adding new improvements to get us to the finish line in 20 years as to what the city will look like in accordance with its future plan.
Is there a time limit by when, by which a new city has to adopt a comprehensive plan, or is...
We are required by the end of this year, by our incorporation date, to have a certified comprehensive plan.
So while we started in March, I mean, it was characterized as a rush, I mean, we, we do have a time limit, we have to, we have to meet, we have to meet a deadline.
Correct.
Have you gotten any emails or comments from citizens that they feel that the comprehensive plan, not talking about the parks or the other plans, have been rushed, or they feel like they haven't had citizen input? Because I haven't received any emails...
No.
...to that effect.
Have not.
Or, or comments. Have any of y'all?
I thought I heard Jacob say a number. Did y'all have a number of how much input, how many responses you got from citizens, or was that another plan that I heard?
I think that Amanda can probably allude to that and give you more information, but in addition to the items that Marie indicated, we had, we posted things on Twitter, Facebook, we did a mail-out to every home in the city.
Right.
We had an English survey, a Spanish survey, we posted kiosk at Blackburn Park for the food truck events, we posted kiosk around town.
Didn't we mail the schedule out?
We did mail the schedule out.
Of all the meetings, yeah.
And as Ms. Garrett indicated, although we didn't have one page that said comp plan page, we had, especially, we notified the public at the kickoff meeting of what the actual comp plan page looked like on the homepage and where you could go to find information. So we, we put a lot of information out there, and we did have public input, and we had a lot of steering committee involvement.
Right. Just looking through the comprehensive plan, I saw meetings of April, May, June, July. We had hearings, public hearings starting on it in August, now in September, in addition to all that.
And then we have 60 days for, once we've transmitted this, for more public...
For more, and, and then, of course, there could be comments that could come back from the Department of Community Affairs, because they'll be the clearinghouse of all the comments from the region. So we, you know, will of course, take those under consideration, and you'll make a determination of how you want to incorporate those.
And so as we've discussed, this is really, you know, the transmishal, transmittal is, is just that, sending it to DCA, but this is really the last opportunity that citizens have over this next 60 days while it's in DCA's offices for those last-minute edits or details. So we're, we're still keeping those lines open, as you say, and...
Yes.
If there's any more input people wish to put forward, we welcome it.
Right.
All right.
And just for the benefit of the public, the actual final public hearing date for the actual adoption, if this travels and comes back from IRC, is November the 18th.
All right, thank you. More public comment, Linda?
None.
Okay, all right. Next, the resolution, will close the public hearing? The public hearing is closed. Resolution?
Oh, excuse me. Resolution authorizing transm...
Resolution authorizing transmittal of the City of Brookhaven Comprehensive Plan 2034 for review by the Atlanta Regional Commission and the State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs. You do have a copy of the resolution.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2014-09-01, Resolution authorizing transmittal of the City of Brookhaven Comprehensive Plan.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to thank the staff and the consultants and the citizens and the steering committee for all their hard work on the comprehensive plan. I know we were excited to get that thing, get this, all the plans kicked off back in March, and we saw varying levels of attendance at some of the events, but we did have some pretty big crowds at some of the events for citizen input, and there were emails about, comments about what people might want in the plan, and we got a few phone calls. But for the most part on this plan, we heard really nothing negative. We heard mostly positive on what people's thoughts on their ability and their opportunity to give input and how their input was listened to. So, we're excited to have this transmitted, to get that process started. And again, it's not the final plan. It's, we're going to be having this next two months to be able to give more input. Anybody else have any comments? All right. All in favor of the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Resolution passes. All business?
Item number one is consideration and approval of the Brookhaven Comprehensive Transportation Plan. This is a plan that also was launched in March of this year, whereby a steering committee was appointed to serve as the group to represent different components of the community. It was chaired by Joe Pilati, who's recently retired from the State Department of Transportation. Just like the comprehensive plan, we had great community engagement and participation. We used the city's website to host the copy of the many drafts of the transportation plan, as well as the minutes from each of the steering committee meetings, and we did have open houses regarding the plan as well. Jamie Cochran is the consultant with Gresham that has been the project manager for this plan, and I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're here tonight to just give a brief overview of what has occurred since the last time we were here. Two weeks ago, we gave a, an update. We did a detailed presentation on August the 12th. On August 26, we were back to basically give you an update on where we are and refine the planning documents. We have a project matrix, a couple of maps, and the actual comprehensive transportation plan text that had been revised. At the last meeting on the, on August 26, we got a couple of minor comments from the public on things that they noticed that needed some attention. One of those projects actually was erroneously shown inside the city limits. That's been removed, and there was a comment on the fact that the citizens wanted a higher priority on the north fork of the Peachtree Creek Trail, elevated from a medium priority to a high priority. So, we've made those changes. The project matrix has six different categories of projects or initiatives, and they very much mirror what we heard back from the community. I think I was the one that blurted out the 11, over 1,100 public comments on the comprehensive transportation plan, and I have to say, this is probably one of the most community-driven plans I've ever worked on, and I've been working a thousand years or so. So, with all due respect, I think that the city has gone over and above to try to encourage maximum participation, and we, and it was very well received. We got a lot of really good information and feedback, so we're very happy that the plan aligns with what the community said they wanted. We have quarter, what we call quarter vision and concept development projects. These are projects along your major quarters or your community connector streets that will do more detailed analysis and work more closely with the property owners in those particular locations to identify ultimate improvements that can be engineered and implemented downstream. So, we've got those kind of projects identified, intersection improvements, where we're at the top of the list of priorities from citizens. We've got several of those identified. What we're calling active transportation projects, bicycle, pedestrian, and trail projects, again, a very high priority with the community. We have a couple of public transit improvements. One has to do with improving bike and pedestrian access to rail stations, and the other is to look at the feasibility of a neighborhood transit circulator to help bring people in the community to the martyr rail stations. We have transportation system management improvements, which are basically to help move, use operational improvements, coordinated traffic signal systems and the like, to help move traffic more efficiently through the city. And then special programs or projects which really help establish a stronger, more robust transportation planning and engineering activity within the city as a new community. So, with that, I'll be quiet and answer any questions that you might have.
I don't really have any questions for it. I just want to tell you I appreciate all the work that you did, and I know we had some pretty high-level steering committee members that really were helpful. Mr. Pilati, of course, was, was your working relationship with him was pretty good, I would assume.
It was outstanding. We had other folks, you know, that were very, that have expertise in planning and engineering, and they were public policy folks. They were, all of them were great to work with.
We have talented people in Brookhaven.
There's no question.
All right. Thank you. We'll just take some public comment unless somebody else has some questions. Right. We might need to ask you some in a minute, but...
Sure.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that I'd like to just state for the public out there is that, you know, and as you've gone through this transportation plan, I think a lot of people wanted immediate fixes to the traffic that they deal with every day, and yet this plan is really to help prioritize some of those planning initiatives, identify the current state, and now we're going to have to take a more detailed look at some of our high priority areas, so.
That's true. One of the most challenging things in transportation is getting a sense of what the community really wants to do, and I feel like this plan has set a foundation from a good, strong place to start to move the city forward in making improvements.
Thank you. All right. Public comment on this action?
None, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All 1,100 people have already spoken.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Action?
Yes.
Okay. Motion?
What's the name of it here?
Marie, you want to read it?
Consideration and Approval of Brookhaven Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
I'll move that we adopt the Brookhaven Transportation Plan.
Your phone may not make a motion or second a motion.
Sorry, I have a recording device. But I'll second the motion.
Were you finished with the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Discussion? All right. Thank you again. All in favor of...
Take a vote?
Yes. All in favor of approval of the comprehensive Brookhaven Transportation Plan signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It's approved.
The next item is consideration and approval of Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This plan, just like the two former plans, we launched this in March of this year. We had a steering committee. Karen Whitehead served as the chair. A number of meetings. In fact, our last public input meeting was last Thursday night, whereby we met a little over four hours to go over the work program, and we had Chris Camp here with Lowson Associates. He went over the PowerPoint, and we went through each of the plans and the comments. There was a survey of over 1,000 respondents, so we did get a lot of good feedback. We got great feedback again last Thursday evening, and I'd like to summarize, if I may, what some of the feedback was.
Can we do that after we hear some public comment?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. If there's a public comment on the Parks Plan, please come forward.
Pamela Burnett.
All right. Barnett?
I have a very quick comment on the Park Plan. It is very specific to the recommendations on parking, and it's about Murphy-Candler Park in particular. I live in the area. I've been there for 15 years on Chesson Court, where kids strip down into their little outfits and run onto the fields to up West Nancy Creek Drive, so I'm very familiar across to the park at least twice a day. What I wanted to mention is I saw the recommendation or a suggestion about a parking deck and more dispersed parking through the park. The difficulties of parking in that area, it's a robust, dynamic community, and it's usually well-managed. People handle the hustle and bustle of the games, but it's once or twice a year where it becomes a little more overwhelming to the community. But I think it's manageable without a parking deck and without expensive facilities. That's it.
Thank you. The parking deck was a big topic of our meeting past Thursday, yes, and you'll hear something about that in just a second.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Next?
Kevin Fitzpatrick.
How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
He's a secret Burnian, you know.
Yeah. First of all, you know, I want to thank everybody who worked on the Park Plans, and I hope they don't take my comment wrongly, because I realize it's a lot of hard work that goes into it. But I think it, we should pause a little bit before we approve this plan. I have lived near Murphy-Candler Park a block away for 23 years. I coached softball in that park for more years than I want to admit. I used to walk my dogs, my two labs, when they were still with us, around the back of the lake once a week. I'm, you know, spent a lot of time in that park, and I'm familiar with the parking situation that goes on there. Parking's underutilized in the park. It's not that people need to park in the neighborhoods. It's that they don't park in available parking space, like at the pool, and I think that parking could be easily solved if we would just require the little league and the softball and the football people to have people out there who are directing people to available parking that is already existing in the park, and I think we could rule out the possibility of a parking deck. And the reason I say this is important is in the 23 years that I have lived a block away from the park, there have been a lot of mischief that happens during the day by high school kids skipping school and drinking and consuming drugs in the park. And I think that if we add a structure that is easily accessible by kids in the park that we're asking for an additional public safety problem or a minor, for a once or twice-a-year event where we need parking. And I would really say that I would love to see the Park Plan rule out the possibility of adding a parking deck in the middle of a residential neighborhood, which is what the neighborhood is. Finally, I saw a typo in the plan, and I think that you should address it. In the proposed rules for the park, it said that, the one that I pulled down from the Brookhaven Post, said that we were, the rules would say that we have to comply with the alcohol rules for the state of Mississippi. And I have a lot of respect for this state of Mississippi.
Hey, that was intentional.
But I'm going to suggest that we pull it back, take a look at it...
I think we should look at those rules first before we run. We've rushed to judgment here.
And maybe there was a little cutting and pasting. I cut and paste a lot in my occupation. I'm sure you do too, Mr. Mayor, but we might, we might want to just take a pause a little bit before we go there. I would urge that the plan specifically rule out putting a parking deck in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, that will be addressed momentarily. Next?
No others.
Okay. Marie, will you add that typo thing to your list?
Yes, I've already done that.
Unless the rules on alcohol in Mississippi are a little more liberal.
More relaxed. More relaxed.
Right, right.
Somehow, I don't think that's going to be the case.
But I take the comments of, from Mr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Burnett seriously. On our four, over four-hour meeting last week, the parking deck came up quite a bit. Came up before the plan. We were, on council, we were surprised to see that, and that's what we had said from the beginning, that the public input, in conjunction with the council's input, would be, the plan would be resulting of those two methods. And I see no need for a parking act. I know nobody else up here sees a need for a parking deck, and you're right, parking decks, and when I was in high school, the place we would go would be parking decks near perimeter wall. And you're exactly right about that. That's just a, that's just a, you know, the parking deck was just a, you know, something that the consultants in other areas they've worked, maybe that was something that was appropriate for them, but for Murphy-Candler, it certainly is not. And there are a lot of places to park around Murphy-Candler that people do not utilize, and I don't think that we need 750 spaces for Murphy-Candler Park. I think that's overkill as well. We need to capture some more, maybe do some strategic areas where we can put a few spaces here and there, just to try and get some of the traffic off the streets on those, on those high-density days. But, you know, we don't need anywhere near 750 new spaces at Murphy-Candler Park. We don't need a parking deck. We can figure out ways to accommodate. Since I've been a kid, parking's been an issue. One thing that I would like to say that I, you know, I'm on the board of the football league down there and work with the baseball league as well. One thing I have been talking to the leagues about considering is they have, whether you realize this or not, that the football, softball, baseball leagues have drafts. They draft players for their teams. And what I was considering, if you have a 12-person team, your first six players will be based on ability and what the coaches want as far as the draft. The next six players will be based on carpool, where people live. If kids in neighborhoods be put on the same team, so you can have a carpool element where you're, because you go down to Murphy-Candler Park sometimes, you'll see seven SUVs in a line dropping off and parking, and there's one kid getting out of each of them. And so, that's something that they're working on, that we're working on, trying to put a carpool element in every team, in the team makeup. So, I think that'll help with some of the amount of vehicles that we have down at Murphy-Candler. But we heard the comments about the parking deck last week and the weeks before, so we're, that was taken care of a while ago.
Yeah. I would just reiterate what the mayor said. You know, now that I look at how the, all three plans were done sort of simultaneously, and at first I was like, oh, my gosh, what are we doing here? But now that I see the end result, it seems like we actually increased the participation because a lot of people were getting involved, and while they were looking at the Comp Plan, they might have seen the Parks Plan, and I think they kind of fed into each other. So, I'm quite pleased with all the input. I think what happened, having been to most of the Parks meetings, is that the consultants did hear a lot from residents about the problem of parking. They were distressed that too many people were parking on the streets. But I think Kevin is absolutely right. I've always thought that if people just parked at the swimming pool instead of, you know, on the residential roads, you could, you could solve some of those problems. And it's by and large, a couple of nights, days, you know, a week or so that there's, like, opening night is always a big parking problem, and it always will be. But that's kind of an anomaly. I think what the consultants did is they said, "We heard a problem about parking," and their solution was, "Well, let's put in a parking deck." I mean, you see a parking deck at Piedmont Park and some other places, but I'm totally in line with the mayor that in Murphy-Candler, it is totally inappropriate to put a parking deck in this park in the middle of a single-family neighborhood, and quite frankly, I think it might even be on the stream buffer. So, I don't know if they really looked at that. So, there's 10 reasons not to have this parking deck, and I think you'll see us amend the plan to probably take that out. We also heard loud and clear that people didn't want a lot more paving either. You know, we want the green space and not more paving or lined parking lots. So, I think we'll look for ways to, you know, maybe add some spaces here and there, but to try to keep it green, maybe with some pervious pavers or even just temporary, well, whatever, you know, looking for other innovative solutions as well. And I think really in all the parks, we want to be very careful that we don't turn these wonderful green spaces into parking lots. I think the consultants, again, saw maybe some issues with parking in Blackburn Park and decided they just needed to greatly expand the parking lot there, and it's probably way too big and takes out some of the best trees in the park and some of the finest areas. So, you know...
Same with Brookhaven Park.
And Brookhaven Park in the same way. So, we heard a lot of great comments in the hearing we had the other night and other comments we've gotten. So, I've tried to caution people that this is really a roadmap. It's a guidepost. It's a suggestion. So, even if some things remain in there that are not exactly up to your liking, ultimately, it's up to the city council... it's up to the city council now and in years to come to really decide those priorities, decide which things get funded, to approve those contracts. And the park plan, remember, calls for every park to really have its own master plan, probably all except maybe Claxton Corner, which has already had one. So I think what you'll find is this is the big overview and what may be one of the next steps, you know, I think we'll try to move ahead with some immediate maintenance and some improvement that you can see soon before the end of the year. I think what you'll see pretty quickly is a real laser focus on each plan that will bring the various constituents of each park to the table yet again, come bomb backs for some more meetings, and really help us do an even more specific plan, you know, of that park. So this is really, this is not the end, this is really just the beginning.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else?
Rebecca, you covered it very well between you and the mayor. Did a great job, covered all the points that I want to.
You're welcome.
But the song that came to mind was pave paradise, put up a parking lot. That is not the intent of what we want to develop.
Who sang that?
Joni Mitchell.
Oh, wow, okay.
Well, John Mayer did.
But I do want to reiterate that, you know, that these, this is very similar to the comments that I made on the comprehensive traffic transportation plan. It's a 50,000-foot view of these. We've got 14 parks. It's difficult for this one plan to accommodate all the details of every one of those 14 parks. So this is an ongoing process. This is certainly not the end-all guide that we're going to use, but it is a good guide for us to have a starting point for these discussions. And as Rebecca mentioned, I mentioned that we will look to create master plans for each of these parks that address the issues, you know, that are specific to the parks that have been pointed out tonight.
Thank you.
Parking deck at Murphy Canler is dead.
All right. Marie, if you want to read in the record some of the changes we wanted to make to the.
Yes, and many of these comments, you know, not only came about last Thursday, but during the whole process and especially as the plan started nearing its completion in a draft form.
Are we just going through the selected changes?
I am, but I did want to mention, because I know some people here in the audience that were here last Thursday night, and some of the comments were more of a nature of more specifics that lends itself better to an overall master plan, specific master plan for each of the parks. And certainly that is my recommendation, that we do add that to the work program, that each park has its own master plan. And, you know, we do have friends.
That's one, one thing we're going to amend.
That is one thing, correct, and to engage the public in that.
Okay.
Okay. The other comments, and again, these are general, so those comments that were specific, like communications, you know, we talked about that, so that's not pursuant to the plan. But we did hear about the deck and the resistance from the community to support that. So the recommendation is to remove that from the recommendation list within the master plan. Also, there was discussion and comment from the public to remove the 250 additional parking spaces within Brookhaven Park. So that is another recommendation. There was also discussion about, you know, looking at where the playground should be in relationship to the pavilion over in Blackburn Park. That will really be better identified once we get into a master plan. There was discussion on Blackburn Park about lighting up the parking fields that are there right now so that it can be a little bit more safer in the evenings. There was a request and recommendation from the public that we change the reporting of the Parks and Recreation Director to the City Manager instead of the Assistant City Manager. And again, another specific comment, you know, more of a playground and some other equipment in Georgian Hills, and of course, that would be addressed when we look at the master plan for that specific park.
The budget?
Yes, the budget from the standpoint of the dollars that were assigned, you know, again, those are just general numbers, those are estimates, and, you know, that is not a specific number that we would.
We're going to strike that.
Correct.
All right, strike the budget numbers, the proposed budget numbers.
Correct. But the work program certainly would be under review by the mayor and council for setting the priorities there.
Right. All right. Thank you very much, Marie.
One more thing I would like to mention, Jim X, and just that when we talk about parking in these parks, you know, we've got these different plans coinciding the traffic transportation plan with some of the suggested transportation alternatives to get better bike paths and walking paths to these parks. We'll certainly address that. So we, as a council, need to marry these plans together to really achieve the best results.
Right. And to that point, I don't want us to forget about being innovative with some of our parking, especially in smaller areas where we could use some other materials such as pervious materials and maybe take some ideas from what we see in some of the European cities where we do have pavers that grass grow through it and it just looks like a lawn, but it does support the weight of vehicles. So we want to explore those options, too.
Having grass without the potential for mud.
Yeah, correct.
All right. All right. So what I'm going to do, just to re-codify what Marie had said, that for amending the plan, what she had said was each park would be, would have a master plan. If it qualifies to have a master plan, I think there's one or two that we wouldn't necessarily need them. Remove the parking deck from Murphy Canler in the plan. Remove the 250 spaces suggestion for Brookhaven Park. Have the Parking Recs Director report to the City Manager and strike the budget numbers suggested in the plan. All right?
I move that we approve the parks plan as read by the City Manager and amended by the mayor.
A nice second.
Any discussion?
Just that, you know, to reiterate to the public that this, you know, this is the first step for us. Next plan, let's start to work on these master plans for the individual parks. So let's keep this dialogue going also.
And then this whole concept of a master plan for parks, when we have situations like where we need additional parking, and if we keep making, I made this comment earlier before to the mayor, if we keep making these improvements to the parks the way we're doing it, we're going to just be attracting more people, which is a good thing, but then there are consequences that come with that. Well, we're just going to ask the people who are, the participants behind the master plans at each of these parks to help us come up with what that solution needs to be. That's the only, that's, I think, the correct way to do it.
Thank you, Joe.
I just want to add, too, that it is our hope, and I think, I think we could say our promise, that you will start seeing some visible improvements in the park before the end of the year. I keep saying that, you know, okay, less talking, more action, and we too are impatient to get, to go forward and start doing, you know, some of the simple things. New trash cans, new benches, paint the pavilions, grow some grass, get rid of some of these dirt fields, install signs. We've been meeting with the Parks Director, and I think we're going to move forward very quickly with the monies that we still have appropriated in our budget both from in this last year. So that's my hope, that we're going to see those kind of improvements immediately. I would just remind you that we really only got complete ownership and deeds of the parks, what was it, two weeks ago? And so we really were restrained from taking out a permit to rebuild a pavilion or anything until we actually owned the parks. We're still dickering about the, we're still negotiating on Brookhaven Park. But most of the parks have come over, and so I think we're going to start moving very quickly and look for good things.
Thank you very much. All in favor of adopting the Parks Master Plan as amended, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Congratulations, Brookhaven. Got our first step towards our vision. All right. Consideration of the Beaufort Highway Improvement Program.
Right. Mayor and council, this, like the previous three plans, we launched the initiative in March with a steering committee, and our chairperson was Luke Anderson, who also sits under Development Authority. Identical to the other plans, lots of engagement, lots of good ideas. This plan really was made up of two major components. It was a redevelopment and improvement plan for Beaufort Highway as well as a marketing strategy and analysis. There are a couple of things that I would like to make mention of, and I don't know if we have any public comments, but the Development Authority has really been a guiding force in this, along with the Steering Committee, of course. And, you know, they're looking for opportunities for the redevelopment aspects along Beaufort Highway and have taken it under their wing as ownership. And as a result of that simultaneous to this plan, they have been engaged with developing an opportunity zone plan for Beaufort Highway specifically, which would allow for job credits. So the Development Authority is still reviewing that, and at their next meeting, which is the last Friday of the month, they'll be, you know, reviewing that. And it would be their request that they get to make comment and recommendation on the Beaufort Highway Plan as well, because they would like to collapse the opportunity zone plan as part of the Beaufort Highway Plan. So I'd ask you just to keep that in mind as you listen to comments from the public.
All right. All right, public comment on the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan?
Dale Boone.
All right, Dale, come on down.
Mayor, City Council, how are you doing tonight?
Great.
Doing great.
Beaufort Highway, we really would like you all to put it off until we have Council Two, a part of this. Council Two District does fall in the Beaufort Highway corridor. Out of respect for District Two, I'm in District Four, yes, but in respect for District Two, if we have all of us on the same page for the Beaufort Highway Plan, then I see it getting a little bit better. Some of the concerns that we have is we're hearing a lot of money that wants to be spent in this area and that area, where I still see public safety needs a little bit extra money to help us secure the Beaufort Highway corridor, which we're having slight problems, which can sensibly be cured by a little bit more extra budget for them. We're not asking for a long-term budget, but a slightly little bit more money so that we can really secure up Beaufort Highway. They're doing an excellent job, as you've seen tonight, the officers, how they're responding. We appreciate them, we love them. Another thing that's considering is if you do pass this, we really want you to think about the name being changed to Brookhaven Boulevard, because the thing is, we want to establish the identity of Brookhaven. I mean, as I went to go get my license renewed at DDS, they tell me that there's no such thing as Brookhaven. I asked them to put Brookhaven on my driver's license, they said, sir, we cannot. You're still under City of Atlanta 30319, even though we were never part of the City of Atlanta. So we want to kind of start changing towards getting our own city and identity. A last thing we want to talk about is sometimes we don't see eye to eye for certain people. But the Oakwood Neighborhood Association is not going to let a third party come in and splatter our representative's name all over the paper. Mr. Joe Gibby, you have our 100% support. We will back you up in anything. We are family. Every single one of you, we are family. The things that your constituents are getting tired and sick of are people splattering your names all over the paper. Thank you.
Thank you. I think what Mr. Boone was referring to there was the latest ad from The Pink Pony where Mr. Councilman Gibby was featured prominently. Is there a motion on this? Was there more public comment? I'm sorry. Sorry, more public comment.
Ben Tallman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members. I am in complete favor to about 90% of what you have proposed for the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan and Economic Development Strategy. I understand, though, that you have a certain amount of money set aside for low-income housing in this project. Was that correct?
A recommendation towards promoting some low-income housing.
I'd like to speak to that one issue if I could. And again, I realize that most of the people in low-income housing are good respectable citizens, are hardworking. Unfortunately, the element I'm trying to focus in on is the, some of the juvenile problems. Again, we tend to either overlook or not speak of things like youth gangs, and I don't know if our esteemed law enforcement has run into that much, but in the past, I've been in this area for 30 years, just a stone's throw from Cross Keys High School, and we're on the borderline there. We have low-income housing in the area there on Curtis Drive and North Cliff Valley Way. And for the most part, things go well, but there are time periods when we go through home invasions, we go through car break-ins in our backyard, we have bicycles and lawn mowers stolen, ladders, whatever happens to be easy and quick to get out. Again, you know, we could report all these to the police, or back then, a lot of it was to Cab County back in the earlier times. But it's a concern that if you bring in low-income housing, you bring in the potential for more gangs, for more juvenile offenders, let's just put it that way. One thing that was really a concern, and I know this goes, it predates the city of Brookhaven, but for those of you that remember the Havana Sandwich Shop that used to be down there on Beaufort Highway next to the Chevron and to the Honey Baked Ham. Again, the word on the street was, the reason they closed their doors and didn't rebuild after the fire, was the fire was a retaliation for not paying protection money to one of the youth gangs. And that's why Havana moved as far away as they could get from the old location and made sure that they were out of the range of that same gang. I'd just like to, like I said, just get my comments out to Joe, you know, definitely since I'm in your district. But it's a concern. I hope that the City Council will consider this seriously before they decide to adopt any new low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I think what the point of the, I'm going to speak to your comments, you don't have to stay, but you can certainly come back up and make more comments if you'd like. Anybody can. It's, I don't think that we're trying to fund low-income housing or create new low-income housing. I think that what the plan recognizes is that there is quite a bit of low-income and workforce housing on Beaufort Highway already, that there's probably always going to be an element of that on Beaufort Highway. Part of the redevelopment of Beaufort Highway would have to recognize that. Now, that doesn't mean that some of the low-income housing or some of the workforce housing that's in dire need of renovation or, and is just not getting renovated, we'd like to see redeveloped into something that's, you know, a little bit more mixed-use, more townhomes or condos or things of that nature. So there will probably be some conversion of some of the complexes where you have a maintenance issue that hasn't been addressed for many years and the cost-benefit analysis for those owners to start to refurbish those complexes starts to get to where they need to think about selling. So we don't want to disenfranchise people who are working and living on Beaufort Highway. There's always going to be a place for people on Beaufort Highway who have moderate incomes and low incomes to live. I think the plan just wanted to stress that that's a reality that will always be there. The amount of it, that's a different story. It's, I think that's what the gist of the plan is. I don't know if anyone disagrees or agrees with that.
No, and I think that there are great examples around the country of where affordable housing works. If you look at areas like Eastlake where redevelopment has had a portion of affordable housing and its redevelopment, it's focused on education of its citizenry. There are ways to bring areas of poverty and blight up to a better living condition without really changing the overall demographics of the area. And that's one of the things that we are sensitive to, is that we've got a high Hispanic and Latino population in, on Beaufort Highway, and it's not our intent to displace them, but to embrace them, but give them a better, better opportunities and a better quality of life here. So that's what that affordable housing component is really speaking to, is that it's trying to maintain and preserve the character of the area while allowing for redevelopment.
I would just add, it's always been my understanding that an important part of the Beaufort Highway redevelopment really has already started and is well underway with the launching of our new police department. I think you're already seeing considerable improvement of what's going on down there. There's still considerable problems, but, you know, there's a good reason why the police department decided to locate right there, Beaufort Highway. And, you know, I have every confidence, and this is to Dale's point, too, we're on it. You know, we, our goal is to really make that area crime-free, because we can't redevelop it and bring in. and bring in, you know, people to, to do all the great plans that we have if there's still a serious crime problem. So, those two things go hand in hand, and just know that we are absolutely dedicated to cleaning up the crime on Buford Highway.
Yeah, I think, and a good analogy is, for many years, code enforcement and crime on Buford Highway was kind of carpeted over by lack of attention, lack of enforcement. And since our police department has come in, and we have our apartment inspection program and our code enforcement office coming in, you know, we're ripping away that carpet and finding a lot of things that were, that were going on, like the, you know, the gang activity you're mentioning with the protection payments, things of that nature. I know that our police have, have encountered gang activity on, with MS-13 and some other sir, sir, one of them. You see some of the graffiti there, and I know that they're actively combating that. So, we, our police department's doing a yeoman's work, getting to the bottom, getting to the root of the crime to start, you know, treating it like cutting out cancer first, because it's, it's been covered up and been undiscovered, a lot of it has. So, we, I know they're working hard, and that's why we located our police precinct on Buford Highway, one of the main reasons, because that was where the chief recognized that it was important to start there first as far as attacking major crime problems. And they're off, of course, our police are all over the city, but that's, that is a place that, that deserves special attention.
And one, one last point to that, to that, to that issue is that in our apartment, our apartment code, we actually have in there that they're not allowed to rent to felons. Is that-
Correct.
Is it, yeah, so, any convicted felon, so they're, you know, it's, that's part of the cycle that we've now, now implemented, that if you are a bad apple, you're not going to be welcome in this community in the rental apartments that we have, so.
Sure.
Sure, absolutely.
But it's, it's not really the felons that concern me as much as the juvenile offenders. That's, that's where I, because, again, they can, they can be picked up and be back out on the street the next day.
That's a good suggestion. I don't know if there's, it's something for us to look at.
It's, it's a lofty goal for your department chief. I, I know you got your hands full, but, but I, I just-
Yeah.
I feel it needs to be something that we address and that we at least put on the table as a concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Ben, Ben, Ben?
Yes.
Stay up there for a second.
Yeah, Joe.
I just want to make a comment. I, I think the opening comment that you made was dead-on, where you said 90%, and you're always dealing with a bad apple factor of the 10%, and that's what we've been addressing hard, we've been trying to do it. I have a question for you. Can I do this? Have you heard any celebratory gunfire in your area in the recent past?
Joe, this is, this is amazing you bring this up, but, again, usually on a Saturday night, or sometimes on a Friday night, we'll hear six go off, you know?
Still?
As recently as probably just three months ago.
Okay.
I mean, it, it, there are times that it goes off, you know, a couple of times during the month, but it's been, it's been more-
Sporadic?
Sporadic. There's, that's a good word.
Well, you know, this is a, this, we know there's a problem, and it's nothing that's going to get resolved quickly, so, and we have multiple ways to approach it, and some of the things we are doing, just want to reiterate this so it makes sure it gets out there, is we have really been working hard to get the, the trust and the confidence from people of the Hispanic and Latino market. We have reached new heights in that, in that reign principally due to the work of the police force and the trust that's out there. So, our ability to get feedback from them, which I couldn't do the first time we had a conversation on this, because it was so early on in the time of the city, has been amazing. Second is, when we started off in this, in our positions, one of the most often asked questions is, "What are you doing about education?" Well, that's a big part of this whole component when you talk about juveniles, and we are doing things on the educational side that is multifaceted, as far as our attempt to try and have an impact, and that's just a long-range plan, it's not going to happen overnight. As far as the workforce housing, recognizing the fact that the 90% of that good factor, they represent a very important workforce for this whole area.
Oh, absolutely.
And they're-
And please, please, I want to clarify, the majority of the Latino community is, is embraced in the area.
Right.
We couldn't survive in this town without their contribution-
Right.
-to Brookhaven. So, I, I, I'm in no way reflecting anything against the Latino community, just against the juvenile offenders-
Got you.
-that, that seem to spring out from different places in that area.
No, I, I wasn't inferring that you were trying to say something other than, anything other than what you were, what you were just saying, but the workforce housing concept is approximately 25% of a unit when it's built, usually it's 25, 20, 25%, it can go, can go higher. They get federal subsidies, but the people that live there live in the same environment as everybody else is paying full rent, for the most part. So, it's an opportunity to take somebody that is in a economically depressed situation and elevate them. That can have a very positive impact in this case, because if it comes with family and juveniles, take them out of an element where they're being progressively fed the negativity and put them hopefully in a more positive environment. Do you know where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's just one of a multifaceted approach, but we do recognize the problem.
As long as we're upgrading what's there already-
Right.
I, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you on that. I just didn't want any, any new areas to, that weren't presently on, on board-
Right.
-to start popping up as part of the project.
I don't think that's the intent of the plan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate your comments.
All right. Any more public comment on this?
Betsy Eggers.
Ms. Eggers?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to speak again, and I promise it'll be short. I wanted to mention two things that came up when Bates had a town hall meeting, and the mayor was there, but the other two council members didn't hear about this, of concerns that people brought forward at that meeting that have to do with the Buford Highway Plan. One is found on page 21, figure 3.17. It appears as if the buildings are back away from the street with a parking lot between the street and the buildings, and when this streetscape goes to be further worked on, we certainly hope that the building should be next to the sidewalk in a redevelopment plan-
Yes, that was, yes, correct.
-as they are on, on Dresden Drive, which is a more walkable kind of place. A second point is on page 22, where it talks about our beloved North Fork Peachtree Creek Trail. It refers to a pervious surface, and I believe this should be impervious so that it is consistent with the Parks Plan that says Greenway should have a minimum of 14 feet paved surface to be consistent with the City of Brookhaven Stream Buffer Ordinance, which allows an impervious public path along the river, and to avoid what's happened at the brand-new DOT's North Fork Creekside Trail that was just completed this summer. It's already showing the gravelly washout erosion, and I sent photos to Bates and Joe, and I'll send them all to you as well, so you can see how you need concrete, so it won't get washed out. Another point I'd like to make is that, as you do, the comp plans for each of the parks do consider having one for the North Fork Linear Park as well, even though it's not in existence now, it'd be nice to have some public engagement with that. And last, just inspired by the talk about youth in District Three and Four, that sometimes youth don't need more police involvement, they need more things to do, and having parks in their, in their neighborhoods, the Linear Park where they can ride bikes and skateboards and go places, soccer fields, and, and as you re-renovate Briarwood Rec Park so that there can be basketball playing and things like that, I think that does as much, if not much more, good than police. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't consider you my family, but certainly my friends. Thank you.
I may be the representative for District Four, but you're my favorite District Three person.
Wasn't there an issue, there was some concern, or just a couple concerns, there was a recommendation in the plan about moving Briarwood Park to-
Yes.
-another area, which, just not something that we don't think, we don't think that's practical.
Correct, and we're making plans to remove that.
Yeah, removing that section, okay. All right. Is there a, a motion on this?
Yeah, I move that we defer the adoption of this plan to, what date, Maureen?
The Development Authority meets on the 26th, so that would be 26th of September.
And then are we-
So, that would be October the 14th for council.
To our October 14th-
Correct.
-council meeting.
We don't have October 4th meeting? We do the second, okay, you're right.
It's the second.
And I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor of deferral of the Buford Highway Improvement Plan signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and it's deferred. Did we have any more, we had no more public comment, though, right, on that?
Not for this section.
Okay. All right, we'll close public comment. New business?
We have no new business.
No other business, public comment? Anybody has anything they want to come back and say?
Dale Boone.
Dale Boone.
How do I, Mayor and City Council, once again, we were just, thank you so much for deferring that for the next meeting in October. We really want y'all to concentrate on the name that we were talking about. Brookhaven Boulevard really has a sweet sound to it, even though my favorite is J. Matt's Davis Boulevard, but to be realistically, to get everybody on board, I would love to see Brookhaven Boulevard. I really would. That would be something else. We have a lot of businesses that are ready to come to Brookhaven. A lot of us have been talking, and so, I see a lot of the fixes if we can get a lot of them on board. So, everything's looking good. Thank y'all so much for y'all always working hard. I think I speak with a couple of y'all on the phone. You're always going to meetings, I know you're always busy, so I know you're doing us a good job. So, if we don't ever talk, sometimes, we, we kind of stay afar, we watch the website, and thanks to the city manager and everything, you know, a lot of people say things, but I tell you what, you are worth every penny. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There you go. All right. Any more public comment?
Judy Memms?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to talk about the zoning variance that has been requested at 2492 L.J. Drive. We live down the street from there. The site plan that was sent to us, which-
Oh, you spelled your last name.
M-I-M-S.
Memms, okay.
Which I practically had to get out of jeweler's glass to look at, showed a four-foot side setback. Now, I know when we built our house, it was a 15-foot setback, and we had to get a variance to seven and a half, and that's pretty close to the side, but four feet is really close. In addition, that particular lot, they are requesting an encroachment on the stream barrier as well, which I did not have the opportunity to look at what that does as far as an impervious surface covering that lot, but lot after lot after lot on that side of the street is encroaching on the stream pretty soon, we're going to start having flooding issues over there, I suspect, and I just wanted to bring up particularly the four-foot side setback.
All right.
I don't know if it's been-
Had you emailed me about the, the concern of the ambulances and, and getting back there? Was that, that wasn't your email?
That was not my email, but I have had conversations that generally speaking, they would like sufficient room between the houses to get back an emergency vehicle if it should become necessary.
All right.
Subback, you're not going to have.
All right. I, I know that, I've seen the signs pop up. Do you, do you know, Susan, if that application on the L.J. for a variance, is that a notification for administrative variance, or is it an actual variance to the ZBA?
I believe the one that we were just talking about has, is one that's already gone through the ZBA.
Well, no, this isn't-
Well, yeah, the sign that's currently up is for administrative variance, and it's specifically related to the stream buffer.
Okay, so it's not the side?
No, the side yard initially was approved by the ZBA.
That's the one I was referring to, the one he's-
During the meeting of May 20th.
Was it approved for four feet?
Yes.
And then the rear one hasn't been approved yet?
No, the stream buffer is a separate issue that has just been recently submitted as of last week, and that's why the sign has gone up, I believe, probably Friday or Monday.
And the process for our administrative variances is that's decided solely by the city administration?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just a notice, but y'all, will y'all give a recommendation before that? A recommendation, or you just make a ruling?
A decision.
You make a decision. Is there a time period on that decision?
The time period is, per the stream buffer ordinance, the new stream buffer ordinance, we have 15 to 45 days in order to make a decision.
And, and the, quick, refresh my memory on the requirement on the stream buffer, is they be required to handle all stormwater runoff if they encroach in that first 25 feet?
No, that's only if impervious is requ, is requested, to be located within the stream buffer in any portion of the-
Impervious.
Impervious.
Oh, impervious, okay.
Yes, and if it's an impervious, so in this particular request, I don't know, so I don't want to get into all the details, but it's related to the outer 25-foot portion of the stream buffer-
Yeah.
-which essentially functions as an impervious surface setback.
Right.
Meaning, they're getting an administrative variance to be, to be granted permission to grade and disurb land. They are proposing a elevated slated deck, which per our definition of stream ordinance is treated as a pervious structure. So, with that said, if they, if there is any impervious component-
Slatted deck, not a-
Slatted, sorry.
Not slated.
And, and if there's any impervious provision or impervious surface associated with any portion of the stream buffer, it'd actually be required for them to go before the zoning board of appeals-
All right.
-and it would not be handled administratively.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any more public comment?
None.
All right. Thank you all for your public comments, and informative, and I appreciate that. We'll close the public comment section on, on the agenda. Mayor's comments, I don't have any, I believe, just thank you to all the steering committees and all the publics for all their input on all these plans. Any last 70 comments before we go? Any announcements? All right. Rebecca?
I was just going to remind you, food truck roundup tomorrow night. Weather's cooling off, should be nice.
All right, all right. Okay, executive session, we don't need executive session. Is there a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Your second?
I'll second.
Discussion?